Call this meeting of Franklin Township Board of Trustees, special meeting on eleven of April twenty twenty four at nine thirty A M. And I would ask trustees, if you'd open this and.
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunities that are set forth with us as the board members to be able to work within the township and for the township and the residents. We ask that you be with us as we hold this meeting and that, Lord, that the wisdom is given to us that we may do your will, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Cam, will you leave some questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Justice, will you please give us a real question?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right, going into this, number one on the topic is fiscal department training. Mr. Major, would you like to start with that or give us a briefing on it?
I'll let Lindsey just go ahead.
Okay.
As you guys have seen, I have asked Jeff to help train you with some things and at the very least make some modules over the tasks that he does do here. I'm still not getting anything.
Okay. Is there, is there a reason why we can't?
I responded to her email and suggested that she attend the three-day conference with the Audit Bureau of State for training purposes. That covers all of the basics.
Okay.
I, I have not heard a single word from her. There are many training modules available from U A N for her to.
I want the one that he has specifically given for us.
On-the-job training requires somebody to be here. She is not here.
I'm here, I'm just not here at seven A M. when you are, sir.
I get here and I start at seven thirty. I'm usually here until eleven, eleven thirty. It has been that way for four years.
Well, guess what? Somebody moves in chair. Somebody moves in chair.
When you got interviewed from this office, you said that you would come in at nine thirty in the morning. You have never shown up.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just not here at seven A M. I'm here almost every single day.
Trustees, I sent you a new computer log of U A N.
Right, right here.
I sent you a new one this morning.
I got it. This, I printed off and brought it with me.
In the month of March, she tried to log in numerous times and locked herself out. She got reset and logged in twice in April so far. She has not posted a single transaction. She's done nothing in the accounting system. That supports it.
Yes, because I have been with Robin and we've been working in Robin's office.
You know what? I'm not gonna sit here and.
And that's true.
Deal with this. She doesn't show up. I'm here.
Wait a minute, Dave, it's not your point as a consultant to dictate what an elected official's office hours are?
I'm not trying to dictate. She promised to be here when she got hired at nine thirty in the morning. She doesn't show up.
I never promised to be here consistently at nine thirty in the morning.
Is there a day of the week that you guys can meet at like ten and go over this stuff? This is, I mean, they have to have a meeting, a special meeting.
Given if she was here at nine thirty and the two hours that we've got together, there's a great deal that she would learn.
Is there, is there, is there a day of the week, is there a day of the week that works, works for both of you that you guys can both be here? I mean, Thursday seems like you got, you have to sign checks and go over that. Thursday's work for you? To be here, huh? In the mornings, like ten o'clock?
Like ten thirty, eleven.
I have this second commitment that takes that back in this.
So what day of the week do you not have that commitment?
Five days a week.
Can you, can you, can you meet at ten o'clock on, on, on one day a week? I mean, this is pretty simple. Work a schedule out. If, if, you know, you both give a little ten o'clock on Thursday?
That's fine.
I'd like to ask Jeff a question.
Okay.
Where you were hired initially to do the audit.
To pick up and where local government services left off on trying to reconcile seventeen through nineteen.
Yeah, I just wanna know if you can tell us where you're at on reconciling the audit.
I have worked with audit and we agreed to a balance at the end of twenty nineteen. All of the adjustments or reconciling items that come into play at the end of nineteen affect every year going forward, and so does the balances because of their audit adjustments. There was substantial adjustments posted from the work that local government services did that I went back and looked at and verified, okay? Twenty twenty was also part of what I ended up having to reconcile. I can go through reconciliation. It's eight pages long with transactions that are improperly addressed.
Go ahead.
That comes back into play cleanup twenty. I have twenty nearly completed as far as the cleanup and the changes brought about from audit.
So you are still working on audit things besides the training?
Correct.
So there's still work for it to be done on the audit?
Yes. And, and it is getting closer to being done. It is my goal to get this thing done and wrapped up and be done here.
So Jeff.
I am trying to retire.
No, and I understand, and you've been telling me that since I took office in January. And, go ahead, John.
I apologize. No, no, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead. It goes every time. Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'll wait. I apologize.
I'm not gonna talk, so you better talk or we're gonna be sitting here. Okay, anyhow, I'll, I'll go then. I mean, Thursday's ten o'clock work for you?
I, I will be here, yes.
Yes, and I also would like the modules of the, the tasks that you specifically does for us.
And, and, and it's not.
What modules are you talking about?
The, all the tasks that you specifically do just for us, the pension reports, plus the steps to utilize the pension portion, the annual data collection for the W twos and the ten ninety nines, the monthly reconciliations, like I need to be able to have something to refer to if I get stuck when you wanna high-tail it out of here.
I don't appreciate you putting it that way.
I don't appreciate you speaking to me the way that you have this the whole time.
You haven't spoke to me much.
Oh, you're speaking to me right now.
Hey, where are dogs here? Where are dogs? Can you get her, can you see?
I can walk her through and help her.
Walk her through it with the reconciliations?
Uh, pension reports, I'll, I can do that, but I spend significant time with Robin and she's very much aware of how those work.
Actually, this was also a complaint Robin had that she wasn't fully aware of how to do it. And, you know, she has a fear of you getting upset and just leaving and leaving us high and dry.
Can you, can you please make sure they're both up, you know, up to speed on it? And, and really, it needs to be taken off of your plate anyhow because you need to be concentrating on, it should have never been put on your plate. Um, I, and I realize it was be.
They were a mess back in twenty twenty one.
Okay. But anyhow, you should be concentrating on nothing but audit stuff. Department head shouldn't be coming to you for anything. And we're gonna put a stop to that too today. Okay. Um, if you, if you, like, ten o'clock. And, and, and then if that don't work, I, I, I don't know, we, we, we'll be back in here, but this is ridic, yeah, I'll let you talk in a second. But to have, I mean, whether she's signing on or not, as an elected official, her job is to ensure that the stuff's done. And if it's done by Robin, I, we, we, I mean, it's, it's done.
It does get done. I help Robin out with it. Rob, I make sure, sure Robin understands what's going on with it. Robin has done pension reports last month or so.
Okay.
But I've also covered how it's done with her. The biggest problem and the toughest one to do is going to be the bank reconciliation.
I would agree. With the amount of checks that are, and, and direct deposits and everything that goes in here and all the mon, and all the money going out, I would agree. And, um, let, let's put it, I mean, it's, you don't need distress.
It's the unusual things that come back into play with the bank, right?
Yeah.
That we address and we, you know, it comes back into play, we get them cleaned up and work from there on.
Mr. Bushman, you got something?
First of all, I apologize, Mike.
It's okay, I'm not, that's it, I'm really not.
I'm, I'm sorry about that. Would it not behoove of the board in this situation that we hire someone for maybe a month, let Jeff do what he does and someone else can come in and say, uh, this is how you do it, a C P A, someone that understands it, the train and the hours that you can.
Let, let's, let's see, let's see if they can work the, I, I agree with you, John, I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize.
I would like all of the extra training that I can through the C P A and the webinars, so.
Let me ask you this, since the board is asking this question and we're here and let's try, would it not behoove of you to start looking and give the board an idea of what it would cost?
Yeah, I can do that.
And be, you know, because you're gonna learn the best from two people that have good chemistry together.
And, and, and when, you know, in a time that it's not rushing either party, but.
Right.
So, but yeah, this needs to be turned over though. Wouldn't you agree?
What's that?
All the extra stuff other than audit.
Oh, I agree. Jeff should be able to do.
He, he should be doing nothing but audit stuff. And we will make sure our department heads know.
I have reduced what I've been doing.
I know. We will make sure our department heads know, effective today. Mr. Major, can you send out a memo this afternoon, please, an email memo? Um, they are not to go to Mr. Wilczek for anything. Can I make a motion that Steve Major sent out a?
Well, make the motion and let's go across table.
I'm making a motion.
Uh, I second the, what is the motion so that we have the motion?
That there's, that the department heads do not go to Wilczek for.
Advice.
Advice and day-to-day operations, only if he has a question for them.
And. Can I make the motion?
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that all department heads and staff will go to Lindsey Justice, our fiscal officer, rather than go to Jeff Wilcock.
Willock.
Wilczek. Apologize, Wilczek, for any advice, um, retaining to fiscal department.
Lindsey Orr.
Yes, that's what I was gonna add. Go ahead.
Lindsey Orr, the assistant fiscal officer.
Yeah, yeah, well, yes.
That being noted, I will, I will second.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. That way it frees you up to say that there's a motion that you should check with fiscal first, they can check with you and that'll allow you to continue to do what you do without having to take care of little fires that are added to your plate, if that helps you.
It does. Yes, I, that way I can focus on updating twenty through twenty-three.
Okay.
And making, getting things ready for audit.
Okay.
I have another, when you guys are all done.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead. So there's another concern that's been voiced about coming into the building before employees get here. So we just need you to lay it out. In order for you to continue to come here and do this, what time do you have to be in the building? Because you have another job and there are concerns, and I understand that you have all kinds of credentials and everything.
And bonded.
And everything, but there's concerns about you being in the building before the building is basically accessed by employees. So what time do you have to be in here? I get in here approximately seven thirty. Todd Breaker is here. I have met with the chief many times, police or the fire chief. I have met and talked with Stevens many times. So, so there are employees around here when I get here. No, and this isn't me picking on you or, let's just get to the fact, is seven thirty your time you have to be here in order to conduct your business here and conduct your business at the end of the day? It works the best for me.
Okay.
And if I get here any later, my travel time doubles.
I, okay, I can, I can.
I know.
I could have predicted that.
So this had to come out. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Everybody had to hear it and so, so you have to make a decision. We have heard about this and there are concerns from residents and, and people about you being in the building and they even went as far as to change the code on the door. And then you were given the new access code. And so no one seems to talk to you about it. I don't have a problem talking to you about it, so if you're going to continue to come here, you're going to come here if you can get in at seven thirty. Let's just start talking facts. You need to be here at seven thirty. If you can't get in here at seven thirty, you're probably not gonna be able to continue on. Correct, and I'm not gonna have sufficient time to get a lot of things done.
However, so I just wanna.
However, working solely on the audit stuff, I don't have to be here to do that. I do have to come in from time to time to obtain documentation and need for justice.
So you can, you can actually work from, um, this, on the audit stuff?
Yes, and I have passed.
Um, so I, what I'm taking from this, correct me, you guys make sure you're hearing this right too. You guys don't get together on Thursdays. Try to work it out. Lindsey's giving us a price on someone to come in and, and, and do some extra training for her. And we're gonna move on from here and regroup maybe. What would you got, what would you guys like to regroup with them?
Well, here's one thing that we might run at great points about the time and stuff like that, but it's kinda hard to just move forward. I myself, we've, you know, got a gentleman who's been doing this for forty years. Um, I don't know if he comes in in his office and does work versus someone else. It's not like somebody new that has not been here.
Right.
I don't see where we've had an issue other than time meeting up. I don't know where we've had an issue at all with him being in the building at seven thirty.
I, I don't see any issue. I mean, he, he, at this point in time, he's, he's bonded, he's secured, um.
As you said, there's other people, Jim, and you've met with other people early. He's able to conduct a lot of work. The only issue that I'm seeing is coincide with the fiscal officer.
Right.
And we're gonna try to work that out. So are we in a consensus so that Jeff has some piece and no one am I supposed to be here?
No, yeah, he can come in, yeah. You got the code. I mean.
Yes.
I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the office is a lock. I can get into it.
Right.
I have access to U A N so I can do the work that I need to get done.
And the documentation that you need is?
I'm buried in boxes.
Okay. I just wanted to, I knew that, but I just wanted it out on public record since we're having this discussion.
The boxes from years that I've been dealing with are all sitting in that office.
And it's not a glorious office either.
No, but hey, you have places to sit and work.
It, it's not, it's not, it's not a penthouse.
Small room.
One last thing, go ahead.
I have been in worse places. One last thing, Steve. You have a name of someone that you can give to Lindsey who may be able to help. Correct?
Yes.
So can you please get with Steve and get that name or any other name you'd like? I am not trying to run your department. I'm not trying to tell Jeff how to do business. I'm trying to take care of taxpayer business.
Taxpayer dollars.
That's what I wanna get done here. I want us to all work together as a great big old family and get along. We all know that generally doesn't happen, but we have to come to a happy medium somewhere to serve the people that are paying us. And I'm, I'm not particularly happy about spending more money to get this done, but if we can spend more money and we can get somebody cycling in, we may be able to fulfill Jeff's wishes and cycle him out sooner, which would save us his costs and hopefully the other person coming in. Do you, you see my ball phone?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so I just want you to know, this, none of this was ever personal. Things come up in meetings and we are asked questions and it always seems to fall on deaf ears or whatever. So it needed to come out, so I don't have a problem bringing it up. There is a position that is budgeted.
Yes.
I was asked to provide a job description, which I sent to everybody in the last month or so.
Yep, it was the work.
Yep, so you got a job description for a fiscal person, okay? To work off of. You know, feel free to, to add or delete to it, okay?
Can, is, are you good with what's being said? You good? I mean, I, I, I feel like we're stuck in the middle, but.
It is my goal to get the audit stuff done, wrapped up, because I am trying to retire.
It would be nice for me.
Absolutely.
John, do you have anything else?
I don't. I don't.
Mr. Major?
I do have a list.
Oh, yeah, we gotta discuss that. Just go ahead and take care of that now.
What do you, what do you wanna do? It's out prescribed?
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
I'll be more than happy to read it for the trustees. It's resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero five zero. It's accepting engagement letter, letter number twenty-seven between Jeff Wilczek, C P A, Franklin Township. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves to accept engagement letter number twenty-seven between Jeff Wilczek, C P A, retired, Franklin Township for one hundred hours at fifty-five dollars an hour for a total of fifty-five hundred dollars. And there's a, an exhibit with Jeff's engagement letter.
Okay, um, the, the engagement letter, do we need to have everything spelled out? Are you guys good with what was discussed here today?
Yes.
Good, okay. Um, so moved as the resolution's written? I'd ask for a discussion? I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roofel, please.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Major, was there some, is there any other resolutions that we need to address that we couldn't, or we chose not to because you weren't here?
Not today.
Not today? Okay, okay. Didn't know if there's any business that we could have. Okay. I can't remember what it was, but I thought there was something.
This is second page.
Second page. All right, moving on to the second item while we're signing this, um.
Yeah, with Jeff.
Yeah, yeah, a few gaps left, but we're good. You can, you can sit here and be bored with us, but.
I got better things to do.
We're not bored, but you might get bored with the stuff we have.
Being that I am on the clock, I got better things to do that are more productive.
Sure. We just, I didn't want it to seem like we were excusing you, like dismissing.
Many, many times, I'm not gonna sit here and equate my thoughts. I got better things to do.
Yeah, that good.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Major, it looks like you have, um, something to talk about limited home rule. You have given us a nice little letter here.
I did. Um, we're starting to hear more and more input from residents with some of the issues they have within the township. And, um, so I kinda composed this letter, kind of as an informational release for the future where we're explaining to the residents what limited home rule can do for them and how it gives the residents the ability to come to the trustees to address issues that they would like taken care of. And if it's within our ability as a limited, limited home rule township, we are able to address those, in fact, actually be proactive and prevent issues from happening before they occur. As you're all aware, there are discussions in the state legislation about taking the zoning powers away from townships who do not have limited home rule as a benefit to developers, both residential and commercial. What's critical for Franklin Township is, with the voter's support, if we could pass limited home rule, it might guess would be in the November election, that this would protect the township or give the township some more ability to decide how they want their township developed. And again, it's critical for the township, and I say the residents. This gives them the ability to decide how they want their, their township to work. So this is just something for you trustees to read through, edit. We can, we can make all the corrections that you would like. But the whole premise of the letter is just to explain to the residents, this is for them. It's not something that the trustees are deciding.
This is, yeah, this is to protect them and protect this township. And it's like I stated in a couple of meetings, and I think about everybody was, in that meeting was here today, that it, it protects, it protects the citizens. It's for the residents to have their community, what they would like to have, but it also protects our borders and establishes that we have a township in, um, ten, twenty years. Um, Miss Cindy brought in, um, very nice document today that shows back the history of, of the township and, you know, as long as I sit on this board, I can say for myself, I'm gonna do everything in my power to protect. I hope, oh, I don't, there's no doubt about it. But it, it's something that we, we really need to move forward on, but.
I have, Mr. Chairman, I know we've got some people here. I would like to hear from them, what they think about a home rule. Are we headed the right direction?
Um, I'll look for it.
Now, there are specific guidelines, whether it be the state or the local jurisdictions, as well as state jurisdictions, and we can't, as a township, impose them on them.
Right, there's limits. Yeah, there's limits set up by the state and, um.
But when you have certain things that, for lack of a better term, are annoying to the residents, it would be nice if the residents could come to the trustees and say, are you able to address this for me?
So what I'd like to hear from some of the residents, 'cause I know three of the residents sitting here, each of them have their own iss, I'm calling it issues going on. I would like to hear what you think of home rule, if this is something that, I'd like to hear what you think of home rule? Go ahead.
I think that home rule's a good idea. But what are we gonna do about somebody here to be able to take care of those problems when your residents call in? You know, um, you know, are you guys gonna hire somebody for zoning? Are you gonna hi, are, I mean, something has to be there in place. You know, and you guys know that I have a very good reputation in my neighborhood and I can get all of them to say yes on this. And I have no problem with walking the entire township to, you know, push this. But I wanna know that we have some, that we will have someone here that can take care of the problems when they arise.
That, that's a great question. And yes, what most townships do is to get somebody like you involved in Jan or Cindy, they have a zoning commission. And it's not made up of trustees, it's made up of you folks. So you sit here and people, residents, present to you their issues. And then the zoning commission decides what they wanna do and they present that to the trustees.
And the trustees vote on it.
But this is why I'm stressing. This is for you folks. This is your ball. You're running with it.
Well, where do we find, where can I get information? Yeah, I don't know anything about home rule.
Once, once, once it's drafted, well, this is just a draft.
That, that's not relevant. It's just a matter of knowing what the heck it is and where do I go to find out the documentation with regard to home rule?
See here, here's, I don't know how I got this or where I got this. Do you, do you know, John?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, I'd love to have a copy so I can use it to study.
I think this answers some of their questions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it okay to make copies for them?
It is to me. I, 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 I am missing all my stuff. When I saw the agenda, I pulled that out, but I think that needs to be discussed.
Can, can we? We'll make copies of this at the end of the meeting?
That's fine.
Well, is that the O R C?
Yeah. Yeah, this has the O R C and it explains exactly. And this is what I've seen before. Um, and how a board's set up and everything like that. This is exactly what you would be voting for and what shall and can't do, uh, and the zoning codes down below.
Yeah.
So this would answer, Cindy, I know you're very detailed, so this would be great for you to have.
I'm a little anal, lieutenant, yeah.
Can we get, um, Nicole to make copies? 'Cause we'll be, we'll be ending the meeting 'cause we have an executive session.
Sure. So what, and, and Mr. Chairman, if I would, I know we, did Cindy, did any of you guys have questions before we move on? 'Cause that was excellent, because if you not asked those questions, this may have not came out for that.
Well, and.
Well, I brought it for that purpose and I just wanna say, I brought that in and I, I want to state for the record that the very first sentence in this letter that Steve put together is, says that the trustees agree to introduce a limited home rule. I haven't agreed to anything. I'm not opposed.
I understand that.
I have not opposed to limited home rule, but like you, I am a resident also. I need to know what we're talking about when we're talking about home rule. I studied this sheet last night. I don't really have many problems. I have questions, a few questions about it and everything, so I just wanna, I go on the record that I.
No, that's just a temporary draft.
This is just a, this is.
Yeah, we did that.
I just, I just wanna say.
If we agree, this would be the draft.
And I do thank you, Mike, for putting Jeff's feet to the fire. His body language is very ugly.
Well, I just. Well, I just.
It's very sad.
I'm not gonna.
No, I, I don't expect that.
He comes with a lot of, uh.
I understand.
Credits and things like that, and he has done a lot of good for this township.
And that I comprehend with his respect.
We're not gonna go backwards or anything, but.
For people is not there.
So I just wanted to state this on this, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Greatly appreciated, yeah, I'd like to learn more about what it is.
Okay, so let me.
Because it goes on a recording, and then I get the retribution on it.
So, I can see.
Have you made a police report on that?
So I see from different residents where it works the other way around. And I got a call yesterday, and I can't remember the lady's name, she lives on Fisher Road. Those houses sit back like two thousand feet from the road, well, the house sits closer, but the property goes to the train tracks. There was a crane trying to load stuff because someone runs a business, sign business out of the property. And they had Fisher Road blocked for a half hour.
Imagine that.
And they did videos, they've been talking to county.
That's what, that's what the sheriff was yesterday.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people now saying, what can we do? And as Mr. Mazer said, what can we do is, as a body of people, this is why we are a township, because we can rise up and actually work together and, and craft something together like this, home rule. The reason I am so for home rule, for the longest time, the last time it came, a lot of people didn't understand it, and they feared that it was gonna hurt them. Now what we're seeing in our township is a whole culture shift, and no fault to their own, but a lot of people are used to a certain way of living, and that they bring their equipment, semis and everything home, and now we're starting to say, well, limited, limited home rule would allow us as a township to say, we're not gonna do that, because in my opinion, two code enforcement officers for all of Franklin County. It's gonna be a while before things get done.
Yeah.
We can make things happen quicker, you always heard the things, not in Jackson Township, not in Prairie Township. It's because they've already do this very thing, and the residents there are like, oh no, we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna stop it before it gets too far down the road.
Well, it, it's just like everything else that Franklin Township, we're, we're behind.
Well, you know, I, I like the idea of how Prairie Township runs their stuff, okay? But there's a problem, they're trying to run it like an HOA, okay? You can't be that nitpicky, because if you are, you're not gonna get that passed, I can tell you that right now.
No. That's why the board consists of the residents.
Business understands residents.
Well, yeah.
And, and I don't mean to interrupt, but there's no increase in taxes, there's no additional fees.
But, but I get it, it's like you plant daisies and you're supposed to plant roses, I know exactly what you're saying.
Your grass is an inch too high, but it's raining for a week, our yards aren't meant to be, like, right now, if my grass needs mowed, I can't do it because we've had.
This is kind of off, off topic, but.
But that, but that's what I'm saying, we can't be nitpicky with it because we won't get it passed.
Right.
That's why, and you're exactly right, but the importance is, you folks decide, like you said, okay, it's raining out, my grass is an inch too high, everybody just, it'll be cut.
Right, but Franklin Township is more of laid back residents, yes, and Prairie Township is more.
It's, it's, it's progressive.
Right. I mean, don't get me wrong, I think that this is something we need to save the township. And that is the goal.
When you get the form from Nicole, it's gonna state in there, I, that, they're only gonna be able to enforce the codes that are on.
Correct, correct, we understand that.
You understand?
Yes.
So we're not gonna make up new, uh, so I think, I think we pass that out, I think we make it available, we should have it on the credentia over there. We should advertise that we're going to do this, and that people can come in and get this paper, we need to get that paper out to people.
So one last thing, and Steve, if you can check on this, and I'll be quiet. From the last time we were going home rule, if Franklin Township ever became, uh, use the word snooty.
Right.
The people can vote to take a back call. So it's not there forever, the people control it.
No, we need to educate the people.
Yes, yes, yeah.
This right here is just a picture across the street. A brand new shed that's, and everything, was put in, he tried to say it was there, it had been there, it's been there for eight months, maybe. And all this, and then that Dave person comes out and says that there's nothing.
See, this is where the home rule, limited home rule. You would have brought this into us hypothetically.
Not us, but.
But the board, when, and I say us, I mean whoever.
Yeah.
This would have came into us, or not us, it would have came into whoever sits in the board, then the board would present it to us, and then it gives us the right, you know, based on the recommendations of what the board, whoever sits here wishes, not, when I say board, I'm not talking to trustees.
Does that mean you need to make a specific zoning?
Correct, then they would come to us with, we wanna do X, Y, and Z, then the board would say, yes, do we make them take it down, what do we do? So this is exactly what we would need to do with home rule, this right here is a perfect example, and the same with what you still have going on.
All right, um, Mr. Mazer, closing the floor, Mr. Mo- uh, Mr. Mazer, moving on, is there anything else we need to take on that? I don't think we're ready to make a vote on this, so let's move to the next item on the agenda, which would be, um, hiring a part-time nuisance property inspector.
And this kind of time's almost over, we were just talking about limited home rule. We, we are starting to be a little more diligent with how we're looking at junk vehicles and nuisance properties. And, um, I've talked to Nicole about this, she's gonna do tremendous with this game. But I would like to hire somebody ten hours a week. When Nicole does the actual processing of paperwork, there has to be, um, postings at the properties. Whether it be a car, or a home, or a commercial property. I would prefer that we hire someone who can do those postings for Nicole. As opposed to Nicole doing all the paperwork processing and then going out there physically, um, giving these notices out. The police department has been great, when Nicole has gone out, they've attached an officer to her. But I do believe if we could hire someone who could take that responsibility. And let Nicole just concentrate on processing, and then have the resolutions completed for the trustees.
Are we able to have a, is there a way, I don't know, I'm just thinking cost, but if an officer goes out with them anyways. Is an officer able to do this type of work part-time?
An officer could do this part-time. No?
No, because it's not in their contract.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, that's, that's a great point, possibly, possibly we can write an MOU to the contract.
Not guaranteeing them, but allowing them if we wanted to, because we're, when you look at if an officer representing Franklin Township goes out, and they do code enforcement so much a day, it's just an idea.
Right.
Versus hiring someone part-time, and then we are attaching a, a officer to them anyways.
If, if, yeah, depending on the person you would hire, in my mind, ideally, now this is just ideally. If you had, if you had, for example, a retired police officer, um, that's familiar with the township. And familiar with dealing with, with residents, that would be perfect.
Right.
And there's a, there's a whole, um, Mike, I know you have.
No, it's okay.
There's a whole, at, at the Turnerwood Police Lodge, there's a whole lot, they, they'll post it for retirees. And tell them to get ahold of you, and there's, there's probably a laundry list of guys that would like to pick up ten hours a week, yeah.
It's not a bad idea, then have to be Franklin Township, Franklin County. Someone that knows.
CPD, anybody. Anyone that's law enforcement. Yes, Mike. You, your idea's better than mine, I was gonna say, we should be allowed to officer, offer our officers, um, like special duty. Like the, the grocery store does, we could just say, hey, we have ten hours a week, but I like the idea of the James with the retirees, you think that would be a better idea? And I think it would be more costly.
So here's what I also would like to see, I don't know if we could do it, it's nice that when, if we send, uh, that person goes out, they're in uniform. That's the, you know, if we had our police, it has more bite.
It would be better probably for them to come with, like Franklin Town- Franklin Township for.
But we would have some sort of uniform. If we made up a uniform.
Uniform could be very, very.
Well, it's a shirt and pants and, and, you know, I mean, if we spent a hundred and fifty dollars on a uniform, and if they are able to carry, because.
Anyone can CCW.
Well, I understand, but if they could carry, if they're OPADA certified, if they're retired, they probably still have their OPADA certified, that they're able to.
And anyone can open carry too.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that it would be a benefit to us if they're, I just said it, I can't say.
OPADA.
OPADA, certified. So these are some questions that would be ideal if we set up a guideline of what this job would look like. Some weeks might go twenty hours, some weeks might be ten, some may be five, but, you know, whenever we set it up and what it looks like. I, I thought of a retiree that we had, but that went down real quick because how they feel about the township, but that would have been perfect for them.
All right, this, this, um, let's make a motion that Steve would pursue this. Look at, may, setting a job description and reaching out to the Turnerwood Police Office.
You make the motion, or you?
Yeah. Before you do it, John, the money, I would just wanna discuss the money.
We're not even looking at that.
We're not even, we're not even, we're just, we're just. Let them explore.
Okay.
Then we'll, we'll go with the money.
So I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Mazer will have the ability to seek out a part-time code enforcement officer to work approximately ten hours a week to facilitate in the nuisance properties, et cetera, as underlying, but not limited to, um, code enforcement. This person, uh, we are looking at OPADA, uh, not OPADA.
I, I wouldn't spell it out, I'd just, just let it go.
But if there's no further question on this, then I would ask for a second.
I will second that, um.
Jim?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lindsay, can you start looking at where we could find up some, um, and you, what was it, um, some possible funding in, in the budget, where we could possibly move some money around to, um. Yep, finance this position, rather drop, rather than have you start it on, looking at it now, than to drop it on you and.
And then also, sir, if we could, we need to have Mr. Mazer look to see what this position, um, most likely would look like, costs, salaries. And defer to you to see how we would subline on it for that.
Anything else on this, Mr. Mazer?
That's it, thank you.
Moving on to.
I have one last question, if I may, real quick, your statement. We would also want to look at two different ways, and it would be a Julie question, would this position be a contracted position? Or would it be an employed position, even if it's part-time? The liability on both sides, which would benefit the township better, sorry, I apologize.
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's a, that's a good catch, um, moving on, uh, computer purchases, this is the fourth thing on.
That was the thing I was thinking about, we didn't.
We had talked about this briefly in our last meeting. There are two computers that we have right now at, at the four days critical that we need to place that. One would be Robin's desktop with the upgrades to UAN, the.
Yes.
With UAN.
Need more storage.
Yes, yes, and, and it's absolutely. It's, it's absolutely critical that.
Coffee maker.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think it would be absolutely critical to replace that computer sooner than later. The second one is Lieutenant Ratliff with the addition of redaction software, he's in the same boat with Robin. He's going to need an upgraded computer with increased memory. We verified that through our IT consultant, Revolution Group, that, um, technically, in the future, we have worked to replace upwards of ten. But as of right now, these two that we're speaking of right now are an absolute must. What I'd like to do is get with Lindsay and, and Robin, wanted to see, I, I think there's, there's funds available in the general fund, uh, for Robbins. I'd like to see if there's funding available in the police department to purchase a computer for the lieutenant. And we're looking at approximately a thousand dollars a computer. So I just, I just wanted to get some feedback from the trustees, your thoughts on bringing this back to you. If you're in agreement with the resolution, uh, to move forward, Nicole has gotten quotes from various companies, and again, I'm ballparking it around a thousand dollars per computer. But it's just something that I wanted to throw out to the trustees, so you could think about it or, or discuss.
One of the things that I brought up in the last meeting, by if we purchased through the vendor that we currently have, majority of the time we're getting, I don't know how savvy you are in the computers. Like the I fives and I six, we bought Steve's computer last time, I was like, hey, let's not do that, let's go to Micro Center. He has like an I seven, they were selling I five for the same thing. There's three things that you need on a computer, whatever brand you get. Terabyte, speed, and then if you want it to be in a desktop, or if you want it to be.
Yeah, well, we, we get that up here, but, I, I would say, yeah, I, I agree, I mean, I would agree with going with Micro Center, they can set us up as a.
Oh, yeah.
I think they can set us up as a account, even.
Well, even if we buy, if we're buying multiples, we get a better deal there. And, um, the thing that for, we're thinking, and I think Nicole's doing it, is, uh, thinking in the future, for ten dollars more, you can go with a two terabyte versus one terabyte. So then you're not gonna run out of this storage space.
Yeah. Mike, you have any questions? I'm good with it, I think it's cost of doing business. Hey, you got upgrade, upgrades is upgrades, and, I mean, I think you're right, though, I think it's built into the general fund's budget, or fiscal's budget for our computer.
Yeah.
And if it's not in the police budget, then we need to make sure Byron gets it in his budget for the future.
Well, and, and to be honest, I, I would like to avoid at all costs using any more additional ARPA funds. Because we worked in the building for Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
And, you know, the taxpayers have spent a ton of money on equipment for him, and we really do need to get that out of the way.
Absolutely. It's time to start living out of your own piggy bank. Any, um, any others discussion on this? I don't think we needed a motion on anything, you're just looking into it, you're bringing up a resolution. So moving on to item five, uh, trustee discussions with employees. Want me to run with it? Yeah, okay, I mean, I didn't know who brought this. I brought it to the attention, it's been on there for almost a month, we've just got hit miss, and it's, uh, something that came up during our discussion with the police officers. And of all the departments we have, we have one department that has a rule that the employees can't talk to the trustees. Fire has no problem, we can go in the fire department, talk to any employee you want, road, you can pull up onto them, when they're on the side of the road, and have a conversation with them. But I was told by the chief that he considers a chain of command, and that they are not to speak to you. Pardon me, ma'am?
I concur.
Okay, so he feels it's chain of command, and they can't speak to you. And with everything that's going on in the world today and everything, I think it's imperative that the police officers feel there's something wrong, they should have every ample opportunity to come and speak to a trustee. We're not here to babysit, I think we know the difference between. We're not here to babysit, I think we know the difference between a true concern and, uh, uh, someone just filing a complaint because they may have been, uh, reprimanded or don't like what, um, is going on, so that's the reason that I brought it, uh, forward and, uh, I feel that there needs to, uh, be a discussion about it.
I, I feel there's some items that need to follow the chain of command and I feel that they should, but they should have, we should have an open door policy with everyone here, all the firefighters, I, I, I've walked into firehouses many times and they, they, you know, none of them are afraid to speak to me, road department, same way, police department, I, I think, I, I think that's an issue when you, when you don't, I think there's an issue when you have, um, a supervisor that says that they don't want their employees speaking to upper management. My first question is, what are they trying to hide?
Right, because where do they go through to any?
Right, so, that's my opinion on it and I think we, I don't know, I, I, I think that this should be handled with a, an interdepartment memo to the chief.
I wanna weigh in. I wanna hear on John's, uh, he's close to the police department, he may have something.
Yeah, so, John, you have anything you wanna add to this?
I kinda concur, um, I've had where people have contacted me and it was some strange stuff and, you know, I would have not known that they'd not contacted me before.
Yeah.
And I've had people contact me over the eleven years that, um, we're petty, but like you said, you know how to go through, yeah, you know how to figure it out. I believe that they ought to be able to go through their chain of command if they are not getting anywhere or see that something is detrimental and it's not, I have no problem with them coming to a trustee.
I, I think, you know, facing something that's detrimental, they need to speak up about it, they, they should not be a fear of speaking to a trustee.
The truth of matter is, it's in the important DM book.
Yeah.
You see something, you say something.
Absolutely.
It's that simple in this day and age, and so, I'm telling you, there are instances in our police department where things are being done and said, but people can't talk about it and they would like the opportunity to do so. And I had the conversation when I was running for trustee, so I have the knowledge before I came a trustee, but I'm not going to go back on what I found out when I was campaigning and getting elected, but going forward, if there's issues, they have to have the right to come and talk to us.
So you wanna, you wanna make the motion?
I, I don't, I don't really feel comfortable making a motion, John does them very well.
Well, thank you, sir.
If you want me to give it a shot, I'll give it a shot, but I probably.
It's up to you.
Correct it along the way, so why don't you just do it?
Craft it, okay.
I'm trying to learn these and when you make them, I listen intently, but I just wanna do it correctly and not be embarrassed and corrected constantly.
Okay.
So go ahead, John.
So be a resort by the, be resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board agrees that any employee, and I'm gonna do this across all, not just one, any employee that is employed by Franklin Township, sees something, says something, is able to talk to a trustee.
At any time.
At any time, we encourage to go to your supervisor, um, but if you feel it necessary to talk to a trustee of Franklin Township, you may do so without retribution. If there's no further question in regards to this, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Is that okay to lay a craft?
That's perfect, and can we please have a memo go out to the department heads stating this, that the men, all employees need to be notified, however it works.
Mr. Stevens, you just happened to walk in, we just passed a motion that employees, um, see something, say something, they are allowed to talk to a trustee, um, we encourage that they talk to their supervisor, but if they come to a trustee, there is no retribution.
Sounds good to me, or if they just wanna talk to us. I don't know why, but.
We're not the best of people, but.
All right, um, that's the last thing we have on the open agenda, so, um, at this time, I would, I would, um, make a motion for a short recess to allow the, um, residents to clear the township off.
As we go into an executive.
As, as we go into an executive session.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I would make a motion for, uh, to go into a recess.
I will second that, I'll make the motion that we go into a recess. You asked me to make the motion?
No, I made the motion.
I will second that motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. At this time, I will, at eleven thirty-two, I will make a motion that this board comes out of executive sessions with no decisions made and I would ask for a second if there's no other discussion.
I will second.
All right, we got a fir, we got a motion and a second, can you give us a rule call?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right, carrying on into busi, yes, Mr. Fleschman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion if we could, in regards to the healthy, uh, rewards.
Yes.
So I'd like, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board denies the late application for healthy rewards for Officer Matt Kidwell.
As it is stated in the, the deadline is stated in the collective bargaining.
That is correct.
I will second said motion.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right, with that being said, meeting's adjourned at eleven thirty-four.